Good evening. We'll call to order the commission meeting for City of El Dorado. Regular meeting for February fourth, two thousand and nineteen. First, first on our agenda would be called, would be a roll call, I'm sorry.
Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badgley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have Pastor David Crook.
Crook.
Crook, I'm sorry. For invocation.
Okay. Any particular thing to be praying for tonight that word city's facing or? Anything at all?
So far, so good.
So far, so good?
So far, so good.
Guys, general prayer.
Very good, very good. I am a little concerned about the weather and some of our citizens are, had, been in contact with some there, have quite cold homes, so we'll, I'll pray for them if that's all right.
You're welcome, man.
Father in heaven, I thank you for this day. I thank you for the mercy that is new this, before we even get up and out of bed every day. And I thank you that, for such an opportunity as this, to come before you and ask you to bless our city. She's a great home. I'm, I'm falling in love with her and enjoying to see what this city is about. And I just pray, Lord, that you would give this body of our city fathers wisdom and guidance in the things that they would give. I pray, Lord, that, that you would bless their families as they are away from them tonight and as they give a lot of time to the needs of this city. I pray that you would sustain them. I pray, Lord, that you would be with our officers, Lord, and our firefighters and our EMS. That you would bless them and, and hold them close and protect them and as they protect us. I pray, God, for peace in their homes and in their hearts as well. And, Lord, I do pray that tonight you would give a, as it turns a little bit colder this evening, that you would give attention to those in our city who need to stay warm tonight. And I pray, God, that you would put people in their path to look after them and care for them so that they may be warm this evening and this upcoming week as it gets cooler. So, in all these things, Lord, I pray that our city would be blessed by you. May she be a great place to call home for all the people that are here today, but also the ones that will hopefully be joining us very soon. May you, she prosper and, Lord, may she be guided with wisdom. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Running down our agenda, proclamations, none. Personal appearances, none. Public comments. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on, uh, on the agenda. Consent agenda, we, none in our packet this time will be doubled up at our next meeting for consent agenda minutes and such. Any old business being none, we'll move on to new business. Kinda making ground today. New business, we have department presentations from the police and fire departments. Let you guys figure out who's going first.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, staff and guests. Kurt Zeeman, El Dorado Police Department. Pleased to come and give you the Police Department Annual Report. Thank you. Uh, start with department motto. The department motto, "Community Safety, Partners in Service", states the essential purpose of the El Dorado Police Department. The department protects the rights of all persons within its jurisdiction to be free from criminal attack, to be secure in their possessions and to live in peace. Department commitment, the El Dorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life by maintaining order, protecting persons and property with equal and consistent enforcement of the law. I think I've told you this before, I've got this little picture up in front of our time clock that reminds everybody, your job gives you authority, your behavior gives you respect. It's all about how you treat people. We'll go over the crime statistics for two thousand and eighteen. I'm just gonna buzz through these really quickly 'cause we're on a time limit. I'm gonna kinda address the ones where you see a big increase in. But out of thirty-three areas that are listed on here, only six of them went up. All the rest of them either stayed the same or went down, so that's pretty good news for the city. The biggest jump, you'll see arson, went up thirteen hundred percent. In two thousand and eighteen, we had thirteen arsons. In two thousand and seventeen, we had zero. So, I can tell you, nine of those cases was a local individual that set a bunch of grass fires in town. So, that was over a couple-day period and we got him caught and I think he's been prosecuted. One or two of those was like the trash can at Summit Park restroom. That's classified as an arson, so. The main reason for that big jump, like I said, were all those grass fires started by that one individual. Salts were down eighteen percent. Burglary was up fifty-five percent. We had ten more burglaries reported in, in two thousand and eighteen than we did the year before. Kidnapping, you'll see, we had one. The year before, we had zero. This was actually an attempted adductions, how it was, attempted abduction was how it was reported. A guy tried to talk a lady into a car. He ended up getting charged with stalking, but that's why you see one kidnapping classification on there. Larceny, interesting, that's actually one of our big numbers, you know, two hundred and fifty-seven larcenies in two thousand and eighteen. That's actually down eight percent from last year. Motor vehicle theft, down ten percent. Pornography, down by thirty-three percent. Robbery was down. Sex offense, no force was up by one case. Weapon law violation, it was up seventy-five percent. Most of those weapon law violations is when we'd serve a search warrant, we'd find a felon in possession of a firearm or that sort of thing. So, those are, most of those were like self-initiated cases. All other offenses was down fifteen percent. DUI, we actually had twenty-two percent more DUI arrests than we did in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, family offenses, nonviolent, was up two hundred percent. Almost all of those were PFA violations where we charged somebody with violation of a protection from abuse order. Liquor law violations were down. Runaways, we had one more last year, or one more this year than we did the year before. Trespassing was up forty-two percent. Uh, unfortunately, over half of those reports were due to some of the homelessness in town. They would go to some of the buildings or businesses they were banned from and we would have to cut a case and write them a ticket or whatever. Uh, traffic accident data, no fatalities in two thousand and eighteen. Hit and runs were down by about three percent. Injury accidents were actually up twenty-nine percent and non-injury accidents were up four percent. Twenty eighteen cases, an overview. The El Dorado Police Department investigated two thousand one hundred and fifty-five cases in two thousand and eighteen, which is actually a decrease of a hundred and five cases as compared to two thousand and seventeen. Total number of incidents for the El Dorado Police Department in two thousand and eighteen, which includes cases, calls for service, traffic stops, et cetera, was fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one. Three thousand, three hundred and eleven notices to appear in court with three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine charges were issued by officers in two thousand and eighteen. We issued four hundred and four off-truck route citations. Uh, three hundred and fifty-eight warrants were issued by the municipal court in two thousand and eighteen and we served two hundred and eighty-eight warrants. Code enforcement. These are all the incidents that Sarah Hagan looked into and investigated. Two hundred and nine trash complaints, hundred and seven vehicle complaints, four hundred and eighty-four grass complaints, fifty-two structure, thirteen camper, seven boats, side obstructions. I'm not gonna read the rest of them 'cause the other ones are relatively minor. Total complaints, nine hundred and twenty-five. She had five hundred and one total court cases in two thousand and eighteen and she issued sixty-eight total mo orders in two thousand and eighteen. Gal stays busy with code enforcement. Couple photos of some blighted properties she dealt with in two thousand and eighteen. Some community activities, we participated in two thousand and eighteen. Our annual national night out was August seventh at East Park. Uh, it was very well attended again this year. I think it was probably three hundred or more people there. We did a coffee with a cop at Turner's Coffee and Donuts last year and we plan on doing some more of those this year. It was pretty well attended for the per, the first one. We're gonna try to do these in various locations. We did a community, another community activity was movie in the park. Was actually movie at the four-H building 'cause the inclement weather was coming in, but that was actually really well attended and they got to see the sandlot for free and popcorn was provided by the police department and had a couple vendors there. And I think a good time was had by all. Girl scout troop tour. That's Officer Thompson, Sergeant Thompson led that group of gals through the police department. We actually do several tours throughout the year, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, various organizations. We participated in an active shooter train at First Presbyterian Church last year. That's Lieutenant Tim Baker and myself doing that presentation. Tim Baker recently did one at Frish United Methodist Church also. Awarding Good Samaritans. This lady on the picture on the left actually helped these two officers locate a lost elderly person that was kinda wandering around, helped get him home, so we awarded her a Good Samaritan award. And, and the picture on the left was a similar type thing. Somebody was lost and this gentleman helped us find how to get that person home, so. Good stuff there and we like to, we like to, we're those citizens that help us do things like that. Our annual DEA drug takeback, we actually did two of those this year. The slide on the left was at Walmart and that was in April and we did one at our police department on October twenty-seventh last year. You see those two boxes by that patrol car, both of those were just full of prescription medications. So, it's a, it's a, it's a good program. We box those up, weigh them, the DEA comes and gets that from us and then they destroy them. And we do that at least once every year. Some continuing education and training we do. Like I said, we try to have as many in-house instructors as we can. It limits us having to go out of town, that sort of thing. We currently have two police firearms instructors, two TASER instructors, one ASAM expandable baton instructor, a Krav Maga defensive tactics instructor, a traffic Doppler radar and lidar instructor. We also all got recertified in CPR and AEDs last year. That certification lasts for two years, so that's a picture of some of us down on our knees on the test dummy. Recruitment, uh, we've been doing a lot with recruitment the last two years. We've had job openings posted at over one hundred colleges in the Midwest. Recruitment visits at Bethany College in Pittsburgh State. A visit at Kansas West, Westland was scheduled, I think it's been completed. Uh, we participated in a virtual job fair through Fort Hays State. We participated in a Wichita State job fair, a Highway fifty-four job fair through friends of Newman Universities. And we've completed recruitment visits at McConnell Air Force Base and Fort Riley. Uh, here's a couple of new officers. That's Austin Galladucci on the left. He graduated from the academy in June or July of last year. And the officer there on your right, that's Brett Sanchez, getting sworn in by our city clerk, Tabitha. Uh, he actually came to us from another department. He was already certified and he hired on, I think, July of last year. I wanted to mention our police department, excuse me, office and municipal court staff. These gals work hard and keep the rest of us out of trouble. So, uh, on the right is, is Debbie Smith. She's our police office administrator. In the middle is Susan Everson, she's the assistant court clerk and assistant records clerk. And to the left there is, is Terry Bowlen and she's a municipal court clerk. Like I said, those gals stay very busy and do a lot for us. Twenty eighteen projects. We started additional forensics training and implementation. Detective Scott Roberts attended two weeks of extensive training in Pennsylvania on cellphone forensics and obtained some certifications. We purchased some digital forensic software and implemented digital forensics in Criminal Investigations Division. Digital forensics is kinda where it's at now. It, uh, when you're talking about evidence, it's on cell phones, computers. Everybody does their business on those items anymore and there's a lot of evidence stored on those things. So, it's worked pretty well for us so far. Uh, the Police East Annex, that's the old Prairie Port building the police department got possession of last year. We've pretty much got that done. We've got a lot of stuff stored in there. It serves as a multi-use building to include general storage, evidence overflow. Uh, there's a finished garage area for evidence processing. Uh, before, if we'd get a stolen vehicle in the night or whatever, we'd have to call Brad and he'd have to move trucks out. We'd put stuff in there. Now, we've got our own place to do that, so it's really handy for the detective. Uh, the building does now have a security camera system inside and out as well as an alarm system. A two thousand and nineteen project, we are going to hold a Citizens Police Academy. We did this a number of years ago, but I think it's been probably thirteen, fourteen years since we've done that. I can tell you, back then, we probably ran a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty citizens through that program and it got to where, I think, everybody at the time that wanted to go, went. Uh, so, we're gonna try it again and see how it works and if it, uh, if it goes well, we'll keep doing it. That's something we can do for very little money. About the only cost you have is, you know, paying some overtime here and there for the officers to do the, to train the citizens. So, we will let you know how that goes. It's gonna be an eight-week program. It meets one evening a week on Thursdays. Classes include introduction and orientation, patrol operations, traffic stops, to the, traffic stops and traffic laws, criminal inves, investigations, self-defense, drug investigations, DUI investigations, use of force and firearms, report writing and other topics. Uh, we'd like everybody to follow us on Facebook, at El Dorado Kansas Police Department. Currently, we've got fifty-seven hundred and thirty-three likes and fifty-seven hundred and thirty-six followers. That's up quite a bit. And you can follow us on Twitter, if you do that sort of thing, at El Dorado Police. We've got four thousand one hundred and forty followers on Twitter right now. And I would like to thank you for all your support and I would entertain any questions anybody has.
Any particular questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a, a want to personally thank Sergeant Thompson for my daughter and son-in-law. They actually, they actually live in Andover, but they're both from here, born here, raised here. But they acquired a new vehicle, new to them, and they weren't sure how to, they were concerned, they weren't, they have a two-year-old and a one-year-old, my grandsons. And they were concerned they didn't have their child seats in this new vehicle correct. Or they just, they wanted someone to tell. And they tried for several weeks to get someone at the Andover PD and they couldn't. They, I don't know, they just couldn't get a call back. I called down to our department and just asked who did it and I think it was Susan said that Sergeant Thompson did it. And I had my son-in-law call down there and Sergeant Thompson got right back with him and set up a time and he was on evenings, I think he came on at six. Did it on a Saturday evening. And just put my daughter and son-in-law's mind at ease because he showed them that, you know, there, there was some little thing they didn't do quite right but they were, they were so relieved. And I don't know if, you know, people don't know that, you know, there is, there are officers that are trained in that. And, and if you don't have it in correctly and you are in an accident, I mean, that could be tragic. So, anyway, uh, thank you Sergeant Thompson. Please pass, please pass that on to him.
So, you'll know, yeah, he's, he's been certified at that for a number of years and we actually had a couple other officers certified that have since gone on, but, uh, that's actually quite a process. It's a three or four-day school. And to maintain that, you've gotta do a few events a year. You've gotta do, I think, at least one child seat check lane type of thing that we usually do at Walmart. And, and like I said, it's, you gotta do some things to keep that certification up. They were, they were doing the child seat checks. I think it was every other Saturday. I think he does them by appointment now. 'Cause right now, John's the only one that's, uh, certified.
And that's where he made an appointment with him and was punctual and on time and, and just put their mind to these and I'm grateful to him for that, so please pass that on.
Good, I will. I will add one thing that wasn't in the presentation. After I had, had, had updated this presentation the other day, I got a email from, I believe it's alarms.org. They rate, uh, safest cities in each state. I think they ranked thirty in Kansas. We actually ended up fourteen this year out of thirty. So, not bad. Got a little work to do, but that's, that's not bad. So, uh, I think, I think Leewood was number one and Wichita was thirty, so we were, we were doing all right, so.
Is there a question? If you had a question, would you have to say something first?
No, I said, I don't have a question.
Oh, okay.
I just had a company.
The Doppler lidar, what, what is that? I don't, I-
So, so Doppler is the regular traffic radar.
Okay.
Uh, that's been out for years and years and years, which is in all the vehicles. We do have one lidar, which is the laser, people call it the laser.
Okay.
We actually, those are rather expensive. They're three or four thousand apiece. Uh, we actually got that one free as an incentive through the STEP program that we do about two or three years ago, so. But, yeah, it's, it's a little bit different. They're similar, but they're different principles, so.
And then the Citizens Patrol Academy, what, I mean, purpose and outcome, like we, it, is, is there, are they in official status in any way after taking that academy or just, it's just-
It's more of an educational thing for citizens to know what we do and why we do what we do and that sort of thing.
Okay.
In the past, that always gave them a privilege to be able to ride with an officer on a fairly regular basis too.
Okay.
In the past, and I think they, they're planning it this year. We, we took them out with our range officers and actually allowed them to shoot a Glock pistol if they wished to. They'll make them, but-
Right.
My, uh, my lovely wife took the Citizens Police Academy years ago and she didn't like shooting that gun. She hasn't touched one since, but that's just her thing, so. Uh, yeah. Most of them do it and it's real safe. We've got our range officers there and they do it one at a time and it's a real safe environment, so.
Couple of questions, comments. I just couldn't help but notice that there were zero bad checks written in town.
Well, that's, that's kind of a misnomer. Even though that's something that's reported to the FBI, we do not work bad checks.
Okay.
You go directly to the county attorney's office and file and they deal with those. They, they usually write the people later first and say, hey, get this taken care of or else, so. So, that's, you're gonna see a zero on that every year.
Every year, okay. Didn't catch it last year, I guess. The other one, I guess, um, appreciate the information compared to last year, but do you keep that data also for trends, what's happening in the last five years or so?
Yeah, we've kinda looked at it, you know, I think I told you last year that we, we saw the fraud-type cases kinda climbing, like the phone scams and stuff. And actually, those decreased a little in eighteen as far as the actual cases. We, we worked on them. The, uh, we get calls from people quite a bit on those phone scams, but fortunately, they're not falling for them. They're just letting us know about them. The ones you see the cases on are usually the ones that fell for and they lost some money or whatever as a result of it. There was a, uh, we got two calls last week and it's a publisher's clearinghouse scam, so. It's one of those deals, they call you, they say, we're a publisher's clearinghouse, you've won something, you know, give us your social security number or something to that order. And once you give that out, you're stuck, so. Never, ever, ever give out any personal information over the phone unless you know absolutely who it is you're talking to, so.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Make sure you support.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. El Dorado Fire Department had one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven incidents in two thousand and eighteen. That's an increase of two hundred and eighty-five incidents, which we- This is just kind of a heat map. We've got some new software that allows us to pull up, um, incident frequency per area. We're zoomed out quite a bit, so you can't see a lot of detail, but, um, again, that's kind of a heat map with the downtown area showing the most calls, so. This is, would include all the medical calls, all, just anything we respond to, so. In two thousand and eighteen, again, we had sixteen hundred and sixty-seven calls. Of those, we had seventy-five false alarms. We had two, uh, two hundred and sixty-five good intent calls, a hundred and seventy-nine service calls, eighty-eight hazardous conditions, hazmat, that kind of, kinda thing. Um, we had eight hundred and seventy-eight EMS and rescue calls and we had a hundred and seventy-three fire calls. As you can see from the, the data there, we're trending up for eighteen from sixteen and seventeen in pretty much all areas, so. I contributed this some on the less than urgent calls. I've started initiative to do better documentation, so we can actually better report on what we're doing. So, I think some of it is a change in methodology to, to do some better record-keeping, but. Our responses by district, we have, uh, basically five districts as we classify our calls. We have Stations One's district, we have Station Two's district, and then we contract with the El Dorado Township, the Prospect Township, and then if we respond mutually to help our neighbors, that's what we- And then we contract with the Elderated Township, the Prospect Township, and then if we respond mutual aid to help our neighbors, that's what mutual aid is. So Station One in their area had seven hundred and eighty-six calls, Station Two had five hundred and ninety-eight calls. Elderated Township had a hundred and fifteen calls, Prospect Township had a hundred and thirteen calls, when we had fifty-five mutual aid calls. Our response time, I was happy to see this, but our, our response time overall seems to be decreasing. Um, our response time from Station One from seventeen to eighteen was down by, uh, one minute and nine seconds. Our response time from Station Two was down, uh, about point four-three minutes. Uh, our response time in Elderated Township, and again, Elderated Prospect Township can be misleading because we don't respond to the same area, it may be. I think we can respond up to thirteen miles out in the Prospect Township and still be in that district, so it just depends on where the calls fall there, but. Again, Elderated Township was down by about point eight-three minutes. Uh, Prospect Township was up, again, I contribute that to, to where the calls were, and it was up by about, uh, point six-seven minutes. And then, uh, our mutual aid was down by one point five-one, again, that's greatly determined by who's calling for help. Our average response to most of these incidents is with three point six-three people. So. Which with our average was down by like point zero-nine personnel per call. Fire losses, um, again, you're gonna see increases here, but this is one of those areas that I focused on to, to try to get better numbers. So you'll see that we had six hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars in fire losses in two thousand and eighteen, which is an increase of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars from seventeen. Again, though, if you look here, uh, our pre-incident values, we try to go and appraise what the property is worth before the fire, so we can determine how much we actually lost. And you can see that that value has also increased, so the pre-incident value that we appraised the property at prior to fire conditions was, uh, o- over fifty-seven million, as you can see. Which is an increase of over five million in data.
So, hold on, can you go back to that, mind if I ask a question? Help me understand the difference between total loss and this increase, why wouldn't they be the same?
The increase is pre-incident value, it's what was, it's a, what is it priced at?
Okay.
The total loss is fire damage. Damage to the property by fire of structure and contents.
Gotcha, thank you.
Uh, we generate funds through contracts with, um, the Elderated Township. We, we contract with them for a mil, a certain mil percentage for our services, which allowed us to bring in five hundred and eighty thousand in two hundred and eighteen. We also contract with the Butler County as a, uh, first response hazmat team for the county. Through that contract, we bring in sixteen thousand dollars, and then through our mil levy through Prospect Township, we bring in approximately forty-two thousand dollars. Past information, uh, two thousand and eighteen, we promoted, um, Captain Rose to his position, we also promoted Lieutenant Carson, we promoted Master Firefighter Fissler. We had two new employees, firefighters Price and Pyle. Pretty much all these people, I believe you all got to meet last year when we did the badge pinning, so. Master firefighter Boggs received his certification as a, um, state-certified fire investigator. That brings us up to three, including myself right now. Deputy Chief Yaden, he completed his Fire Inspector One certification through the International Code Council. And we got eighty-eight percent of the department certified, um. International Fire Service Accreditation Council is what IFSTAC stands for, but we got them certified as Inspector One, so they'll go out and do their company inspections, and they have the certifications to back that up. Maintenance, we do a lot of our own maintenance to our apparatus in-house. Um, our guys logged over three hundred and fifty-two hours of maintenance. And if we would have taken that equipment out for that three hundred and fifty-two hours, it would have equated to approximately seventeen thousand dollars in labor, so. Our guys are doing a good job at helping us save some money there. Inspections, we try to annually make it into every occupancy in Eldereta, some of them are difficult to get into, um. Maybe churches, maybe apartments, it takes some scheduling, so. Uh, we try to shoot for at least ninety percent, we, I mean, our goal is a hundred percent, but ninety percent is kind of our benchmark, so. In two thousand and eighteen, we reached that ninety percent. And two thousand and seventeen, again, you can see for, we, we did ninety-four percent, so we're a little bit down on that. And then we're up drastically from sixteen. We also try to touch every fire hydrant in, uh, Eldereto at least once a year, we average ninety-nine percent every year for that. That will be due to going out and finding hydrants that we can't complete the test on, they may be out of service, so they might not be tested. That number also includes, um, fire hydrants that are outside of the city limits that we do upon request, so we don't get requested to do those very often, so we won't reach that hundred percent very often, but. Public education, we had three hundred and fifty contact hours of public education, um, this includes Project Twenty Twenty. Um, we mentor classes at the high school, the middle school, and then Blackmore Elementary. Uh, the Junior Firefighter Program, where we go out to all the elementary schools, um, Lieutenant Carson actually goes out and teaches fire prevention to the fourth grade classes every year. Um, we've had some success with that, a couple of years back, we actually had a student that, uh, their home caught fire, and he was able to tell his parents what needed to be done. And they had a positive output, uh, outcome from that, so. Also includes various fire extinguisher training, um. Safety talks at the Baptist preschool, preschool and daycare, as well as edicare. Fire prevention week assemblies at all the great schools here in town, and as well as station tours here. Well, we continue our partnership with Butler Community College, um, with a student-resident program, this is proven to be very beneficial. It allows us to give the students training while we also get some manpower from the college. So, uh, this is a good program, I think, um, we have up to ten in that position, and I think we're averaging about eight right now. We had five thousand four hundred and forty-five total hours of training in the fire department, um, those coming from two thousand and thirty-three total training classes. And some examples of the training we attended were, um, the Kansas State Firefighters Association Conference. The KU, mini KU training classes, KU, um, Kansas Fire Service or Fire and Rescue Training Service. So that'll be like your firefighter one, your firefighter two, your driver operators and things like that. The Kansas Chapter of the International Association of Arson Investigators, they have an annual seminar. Again, we work closely with refineries, so they invite us, um, annually to go down to Texas A&amp;M, and our guys learn industrial firefighting alongside their people. So if we ever respond out there, we have a, a background from that. And then all of our personnel are at least, uh, EMT, which requires twenty-eight continuing education hours every two years at a minimum, so we do a lot of emergency medical training. Events that we took, um, part in include the MDA boot drive, uh, with Flag Day, Eldereta Fall Festival. Pretty much anything big in town, we try to take, uh, become a part of and participate in, so. Future initiatives, uh, we're trying to start this year, we want to, uh, we're looking at updating the adopted international fire code. We want to start an elderly fire prevention program. That's something that's overlooked by a lot of departments, where we go out and we teach some fire prevention things to senior citizens, so. We want to bolster or increase our fire prevention programs with children. We have a goal of getting the deputy chief certified as a state-certified fire investigator. We're working through, I actually did some interviews today on implementing part-time firefighters to help cover sick leaves and vacations and things like that, so. We're also working to improve our inspection practices, and we want to increase smoke detector installs. This is a great partnership we've got going with the Red Cross, they actually provide smoke detectors free of charge. So, um, and I think we're, as we bolstered, bolstered this year, this year, we're up to forty-eight installs this year already in residences throughout Eldereto, so. We're hoping to keep that going. I'd like to thank you for your support, entertain any questions, if you have any.
Any particular questions for?
I don't have any.
I have two, I have a couple of those, just trying to give you for the, maybe for the general public as much as anything. Station One and Station Two, do they have geographic areas, or what, what constitutes a call to one or the other?
The response area for Station One is everything east of High Street. Station Two will include High Street and West, so.
Okay, so there is, it's just geographic, so when you call nine-one-one, it, that center is what determines where it's at and what station.
They'll call nine-one-one, and their computer's set up, and it recommends what response units will be, and it'll have Station One or Station Two on their console as the calls come in.
Okay. The other one I have is, you talked about part-time, do we, do you still have a volunteer, uh, program?
We still have a volunteer program. All the departments in the United States are struggling trying to keep volunteers, and, um, while we didn't increase our budget with this, we were, we had a stipend that we weren't using, that the volunteers, uh, was for the volunteers. So I repurposed that, gave preference to my volunteers and the students for the part-time positions. And then we bring them in and try to better utilize them to, to fit the city's needs, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks for your time, thanks for all the department's work and efforts. Moving forward on our agenda, we have item number eleven would be project number five-five-three, which is sanitary sewer extension.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we have received a petition for the extension of sanitary sewer. To serve what is Block Seven of the C.L. Stone Edition, formerly Grandview Elementary. Bring a map up for your view. The area bounded by the red dash line inside is that improvement district. There is fourteen lots that is suited for single-family homes. And developer has requested extension of the sanitary sewer to serve that property. Project costs are estimated at fifty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, of which a hundred percent will be borne by the benefit district.
Okay. And that benefit district is just to make it lots at this point, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, any questions or comments from the commission?
Is this gonna be like all the others bonded for twenty years?
Yes, it, 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 it may be, uh, what you're doing tonight is, is determining advisability and the potential to go to bonds. It may be at the developer's discretion when the project's finished, that he just wants to pay cash, or some other, pay, pay a portion, um, what have you. Upfront, we go ahead and authorize it for bonds.
Alright. Any other questions or comments from the commission? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Resolution number?
Twenty-eight seventy-six.
I move that resolution number twenty-eight seventy-six, a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Eldereto, Kansas. Making certain findings with, with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings. Sanitary sewer improvements, sanitary sewer extensions, project number five-five-three.
I'll second it.
Case, we moved it second, any further comment? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda would be appointments. That time of year when we reorganize who's on first. We have. A couple of shuffles we talked about doing, and, um, I think we talked about, uh. And I think they all affect Commissioner Wilkinson. Primarily, moving, uh, taking on Parks and Rec, uh, position. Commissioner Guthrie going off of that, that committee, that post. And then, um, we had talked about the EFABC, and I think, I'll let, I'll let the discussion here at the table. Determine where, uh, the appointment versus alternate go, I know Commissioner Lewis, uh, may have something to share with that, and then we also are looking at. Commissioner Wilkinson as vice mayor. And the appointment taking Commissioner Lewis's place in that.
I have asked to step down from the board of the ABC, or EFABC, and let Kendra take my position because I, uh. I'm currently involved in three other, three other boards. And, uh, she said she was kind of bored weak. And, uh, so I asked her if she wanted to become the, the member, and I would become the alternate. And she agreed.
Okay, so first thing would be, uh, for, I think we need to act on, vote on would be. Commissioner Guthrie coming off of Parks and Recreation Board and Commissioner Wilkinson in that place. Can we do this all in one motion tab with her, or do we need to do individual ones?
You, you don't have to vote to take him off, you can just vote to put her on. And, and so what I would do is change that motion to say, select Commissioner Kendra Wilkinson as vice mayor for the year twenty nineteen. EFABC member and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member, and Commissioner Greg Lewis as alternate EFABC member.
So take out alternate?
Take out alternate for Kendra and add Commissioner Greg Lewis as alternate EFABC.
Okay. If there's no, Kendra is not, speak now, or.
Just go for it.
I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to select Commissioner Kendra Wilkinson as vice mayor for the year twenty nineteen. EFABC member and Parks and Rec Advisory Board representative. I also move that Commissioner Greg Lewis be named alternative, alternate to EFABC.
Second. Okay, so we moved to second, for the comment. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Uh, reports, I think from the commission and advisory board updates.
I have none to make this time, but I'm sure I will next time.
There you go.
I, I haven't had any, any meetings either since we've last met, so.
Same with, same with me, I don't have anything in a particular report.
The only thing I have is, Scott, can you give us an update on Central?
Sure. All of the waterline work is complete, everything is tied in, um, all the properties. Along Gordy from Central to First Avenue, um, have new meter services. We installed a new eight-inch waterline along that entire block. On Central Avenue, uh, we have tied in, we've laid a whole new waterline as well. Upgraded all the services to all those buildings, and the meters have tied in. Our road contractor was there today, uh, we saw them probably milling the surface of the, um, damaged asphalt off. They'll proceed with some of that work on Gordy tomorrow. Either tomorrow or the day after, I'm not sure on scheduling quite yet, but the dirt contractor will come in. We will remove the brick, um, that is there. That brick will be stockpiled for the city's use in the future. We still do have a few brick streets with not a surplus of bricks around at our disposal, so they're handy to have. Then that dirt work will take place, and you'll see the asphalt go back in. Really concentrating on, on. Building a thicker road base and an asphalt section there, something that'll last a long time. Fortunately, a lot of our roads in downtown Eldereto are some of our thinest pavement section roads in town with the highest traffic volumes on them, so. Instead of two inches of asphalt and brick, we're going back with nine inches of asphalt, six inches of rock base, something that'll last for a long time.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Chief Scott, correct me if I'm wrong.
Chief Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but on Third Street, out in front of the old Jefferson site, is that still a school zone? The signs are up, I think it's, there's three different times. It's, you know, seven to?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen and?
Lunch hour and then?
And lunch hour and then after. Is that still a legitimate school zone?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and the reason I ask is I was through it today twice during, and I was going twenty and I had someone come in the other direction that was going well over twenty. So I think people were thinking, since there's no flashing lights there anymore, that it's not a school zone. But the signs are up and the times are there, so. Just wanna let people know that is still a legitimate school zone and there are children present or those signs wouldn't be up, so.
Why do we have school zones at noon?
The district made that request to keep that. They debated um, going into the school year when we modified all those school zones because of Blackmore shifting from Jefferson and Grandview being constructed. They, they felt like they wanted to keep them over the lunch hour with an open mind to look at it again this summer and have a discussion. They do have pre-K. And I'm not sure that they have classes at Blackmore, but I do know Skelly and Grandview have pre-K where that transition time between AM and PM classes is over that time period.
Okay.
But it's something that it's been that way forever, yeah.
I quite used to go home for lunch. Okay. Anything else? Anything from city manager?
Yeah, just a few things. Um, so you'll see here on the screen, this is the city's newly revised webpage. The city had a contract with, has a contract with Civic Plus and I think every so many years we get a face upgrade, so this is, this is the new upgrade. Hopefully it'll be a little easier for citizens to get around, find the information they need. This is the initial website you'll see, which you can scroll down and you can uh, sign up for news. You can access your utility bill, look for jobs, the calendar, um, visit, get information about events and things that are coming up. Um, and then there's additional information um, down um, and throughout. So this is, this is live now, but there is some information as we continue to make transition that is not available right now, but will be soon. Right now, if you were to go on and try to find agendas or minutes from about November of last year to now, you won't find it and, but that's, that information's coming. Um, we just ask people to be patient as it's, as it, as we transition the data over to the new site. Um, in addition to that, the calendars are all blank, uh, but again, that will be populated as information is, is put in those tables uh, through the transition process and the site goes completely live. Um, but for right now, we, we have the, the framework and much, much of the information from the previous website is, is available and you can, you can access it, um, and departments will continue to look at this at their websites and put more information as, as, as it needs to be done, so.
Are those really our tulips?
I believe they actually are. I believe these tulips were actually right out here in City Hall.
Just wanna make sure they're ours.
That picture is from Debbie Smith, it was one of the contest winners.
Ah, okay.
That was her thought processes, was the photo contest was pictures for the websites and for the calendars and brochures and whatnot. That was the evil arterial motive of Molly did.
Always, always.
That's right. So that's live today. In addition, I wanted to give you guys an update on the city survey that is due. If you haven't completed one yet, it's due um, next Friday at noon. Um, but we've received five hundred surveys thus far, which represents about thirteen percent of our households in town, so pretty good, pretty good results, we're pretty satisfied with that. Bike path lighting project is underway or very preliminary stages anyway. They've been checking out the bollards, getting ready to remove certain bollards and installing uh, the bike path lighting um, where it's, where it's needed to be on the existing bike path. Uh, the nice thing about the lights that they're putting in, they'll be fourteen feet high and because of their height and because of their brightness, we will have to, we will be able to get away with putting one in every other place where the current lights are and still light the bike path pretty well. So those are coming and we're also looking at, in some spots, they would, they would be solar lighted because we don't have power, but for the most part, in this next section, we have, we have underground utilities and we'll be able to put power to them without solar um, power. So that'll be, that'll be coming soon. Um, in addition, we've got a number of other park projects going on, including the East Park Shelter. If you've been by there, maybe you've heard uh, the East Park Shelter is gone. Um, we are currently pouring the pad for the floor and the foundation and the footings have been, are, are being put in. And then in the next, well, in the next week or so, the shelter will actually be constructed and we'll have a new park shelter in East Park. In addition to that, city staff is partnering with Butler Community College on the construction of a press box. We're actually removing the um, storage shed that was located there um, behind home plate on the North Field. We're moving that, doing some ground prep and some concrete pouring and we're gonna, and then Butler will bring in and construct a press box that they'll be sharing with USD four ninety and storage and various things like that. So it'll be an overall improvement to the, uh, improvements have been made to the East Park North, North Field. We, uh, Butler also put in some seats, um, seat backs uh, from, well, they were supposed to be from Lawrence Dumont, but they found some other ones that they put in and those Lawrence Dumont ones will be put in over at Mac Stadium here coming up soon. So those are some good improvements that have been happening. In addition to that, Gordy Park Playground will be coming. We haven't actually taken um, possession of the playground yet. It's gonna be put on a truck um, this week, so we should be getting it um, pretty quickly. And, and you may notice that part of the, all or part of the Gordy Park Playground has been removed and has been set aside over the ball fields. We're gonna set up some of that playground equipment over there so that kids can play on it when their, when their siblings are playing baseball at the, at the ball ground over there. So the plan will be to set up and install the Gordy Park Playground. And then once that's completed, we'll move over to the Library Playground and get that one set up and, and going. We don't wanna have two projects going at the same time. So that'll be coming uh, very soon, um, so we can have all that taken care of and folks should be seeing that progress within the next, hopefully the next couple of weeks. But I know that in some of these projects, the, the ground is still relatively wet and we can't really get equipment in because it'll, it'll, it'll be a problem. Just for general public information, um, the city and the school district have been talking about partnering for tennis courts and we're looking at doing uh, a potential inter-local agreement to do exploratory discussions on that. We've kind of narrowed it down to two, looking at two sites, the Lincoln School Site, the former Lincoln School Site rather, and um, the North Main Rio Park uh, Facility Site. And so more information will be coming out on that soon. And then finally, the last thing I have is really just a reminder for you all, the annual employee appreciation breakfast starts at six AM on Friday. So if you're interested, we will be over at the County Four-H Building right here behind City Hall. You don't have to come for the entire time, you can come at six AM, you can come at seven, um, but you're more than happy to come down.
Okay.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. All right. Any further, next thing on our agenda would be executive session. What's the timeframe that we're looking?
Um, let's go with ten minutes.
Ten?
Ten.
Okay.
And if you can, like last week where you added in that uh, city attorney Lynn Scott will be participating via phone? She will be calling in shortly.
Someone need to say that?
Yeah, at the end of your motion, you're saying city attorney Lynn Scott will be participating via phone.
I already put mine away.
Do what?
I already put mine away.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client exception under KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two. For the purposes of discussing the ongoing litigation, city attorney Lynn Scott to participate via phone and to reconvene the meeting at seven forty PM in the city commissioner's room.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any further conversation? Oppose, say aye?
Aye.
Favor say aye, or oppose say? Oh, favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, we go retire, retire to executive session until seven. Thank you.